Okay. All right, let me call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order. For the record, today is Monday, November 10th, 2025. We are participating both in person and via Zoom. Attending in person in the City Hall Auditorium. I have Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Oliver, and I see participating via Zoom is Councilman Waldron. It is now 6:31 PM before we jump into the agenda. Could we kindly stand and pledge the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wow, I look like that son.
I know. They're everywhere. Yeah. So if we can, jump into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Come on.
They're moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And not so much public, just department heads? Anybody wishing to address the council yet? Moving on. Item number two A, I'll entertain a motion to accept this special joint meeting. Thank you, Councilman Oliver, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And an abstention for the record is Councilman Oliver. Two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept this regular meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025.
Come up.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the abstention again to Councilwoman Oliver.
Yep.
Two C, I will entertain a motion to accept this special meeting minutes from October 28th, 2025. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And questions or comments on these minutes? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One abstention.
For the record, an abstention to Councilman Oliver. Item three, the, again, I'll take this in three parts. Three A is a needing motion to appoint Stephen Thompson as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term set to expire December 14th, 2027.
Come on.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three B, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Randall Stelma as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term set to expire December 1, 2025.
Come up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three C, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ivy Altman as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term set to expire December 15th, 2028.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so item four is, it is, I don't know why we really need a vote, but for purposes of the record, because I do think as we march this, this project along, I feel that it is really important that we put it in front of the public as many times as we can for discussion purposes and for any potential future actions. So for that purpose, I will entertain a motion by the City Council members to acknowledge receipt of the Public Safety Complex Report as submitted, and I believe it was emailed to everybody this afternoon.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman Iveyne. And are there questions or comments on this? Again, this is just to acknowledge that you have received it. Then I'm going to call this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then item five. I know it's a little clumsy, but as I was discussing this with the various stakeholders and our Assistant City Clerk, what I wanted to do is establish as soon as possible a building committee, a building committee for the purposes of vetting the feasibility study and potentially being the fiduciaries that will be in charge of the planning grant that is going to be submitted for consideration through the CIF. So obviously, we're transitioning into another administration. There's, we've been fortunate because Mayor-elect Spino was a part of the ARPA Committee when we were discussing using ARPA funds to do the feasibility study. And the council has seen a few grant applications come through the council for approval for planning grant funds and for CIF funds. So I think it's really incumbent on us to commit to creating the building committee, but obviously leaving the appointment of that building committee to Mayor Spino when she takes over in December of 2025. So, thank you. The motion was made by Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Oliver, Iveyne. Are there any questions with regard to this process or the need for this committee?
Do you have a set number to be on the committee?
I don't, and I think that that would be for a future council and the mayor to decide. But the one thing that I did express that I felt was imperative, representation from the Board of Safety, representation from the City Council. I mean, obviously, the chiefs, the, I think a member from the public would be a really smart idea. So it can be, I don't think you ever really want to have your, any of your committees more than eight to 10 people, because getting your quorum, getting your meeting scheduled gets to be a little bit clumsy. But that would be a recommendation.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to call this. So there is, again, the motion is to establish a building committee for the Public Safety Complex. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll let Mayor Spino take care of the population of that.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into item number six. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute and amend the union contract between the City of Torrington Local 2212, Council Foreign American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, AFL, CIO, Torrington City Hall employees for the contract period July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. You have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And any questions or comments on them?
So will this go retroactive to July 1?
It will. Yes. Other questions or comments?
Is that retroactive, budgeted in?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, so throughout the budget process, obviously, we know there's usually a range. Those budgeted funds were held in Department 44 in your budget books. So if you were to go there, you'd find that extra money in there. Any other questions before I call the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I will entertain a motion to approve the closure of the Torrington Savings Bank account ending in 5108, which has been referred to or known as the TRI account, and authorize a transfer of the remaining balance of $5,070.65 to the Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, and seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And Chief Tripp is here, if you have questions.
What was the origins of the TRI account?
I figured you were going to ask that. So in 1994, under May D. Donnie, she developed this committee, the Fire Service Coordination Committee, which we called the FSCC. What that was, it was a joint committee between all the volunteers in the creative department to establish some standards of buying equipment, standardizing equipment, do some training, get to talking. Back then, it was, we were on these struggles of areas and your competitive. That's kind of weird. Back in the day, the three volunteers in the creative department, they were kind of butting heads back then. So the mayor and the chiefs got everybody together, started talking about a coordination between all four departments. Since then, Burwell is closed in 2017. I left Torringford and Drakeville. Now Torringford closed. And what this account was, it was an account that's set up by the council to give money to that committee to help the volunteers basically standardize stuff. So they needed some pagers, we got pagers out of there. They needed gear, we got some gear out of there. Some training, got some training out of there. So this is the balance of the three, just over $5,000, that Torringford has been executor of the account. So it's been a separate account. The treasurer did a great job maintaining all the records and all the receipts. And this is the balance. So with the closing of Torringford, I thought it was in the best interest to continue that and just close it up and give it to Drakeville so we can close that account and I'll report on East Side in my department head.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Tripp? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. All right, we're going to move into item number eight. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to approve design-initiated change orders for the rehabilitation of the Church Street Bridge over the west branch of the Nogatuck River, CT DOT Bridge Number 03976. The total change order sum is $226,178.60. And this will be covered from the City of Torrington Pavement Bond Fund per City Engineers Memo dated November 5th, 2025. You have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. And the floor is open for questions.
I have one.
Yes.
How does this impact our current budget situation? In there, out of there, it's a new thing, it's not a new thing. It's been anticipated, hasn't been anticipated.
So we still have bond funds available for the rest of this year and for next year. So that's been taken into account in my planning for this year's work and next year's as well.
How much is left?
I think the last bond we haven't touched yet, and all the work from this year's construction will carry us to use the rest of the current bond that we have, the 24 bond. We call the 324 fund.
So.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
How much is left?
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, this is too, this is way over what was, and the mayor reminded us, that we had a contingency for this project of 60,000.
Right.
We did. So the 60,000 will not be used. So this, so this 224,000, the project itself is coming in only $17,000 over budget, over the $1,474. So I will not be using that 60,000. So in essence, if you take the 60,000 or 50,000 out, then this, this change order, when you look at the bottom line for what the project will have incurred, is, gets actually reduced from the 224 by that $50,000. So it actually brings it to less than 200. So does that make sense?
That doesn't sound right to me.
I mean, why wouldn't you use and apply it to this project versus?
Well, I could have, I could have used the 60,000 to cover the 70,000 for the concrete parapet wall and then asked for an additional $150,000 to cover the remaining change orders. But I wanted to make sure that, I thought it was more transparent to ask for the 226,000 to cover all three of these extra work items. But the 70,000 was a contingency, which I would typically not use if I didn't have to for the, for the project.
I'm still a little iffy on that.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
I feel like, you know, I appreciate your intent, you know, to be transparent, but it would, to me, feel better to have used that full amount of the contingency and have the request be less than. This is a large amount, 226,000, way beyond the whole RFP process, whatever you call it, that, you know, went out.
Right.
I mean, I recognize that there are probably some things that had happened, obviously, by your memo, but it doesn't really sit very well.
It's more of just an accounting, way of, it's just really a way of looking at the accounting of the project. I don't typically use contingency funds on a project if I don't have to. And they're typically there because it's a unit price contract. If, like, I can't, if you guys award me a contract for, say, $100,000, for $1,474, there's no way that project's going to come into that, right to that dollar value. It's going to be there a little bit more, or it's going to be a little bit less, or... So that's why there's that, that's why I asked for, you know, approximately, and it's unforeseen, the $60,000, $70,000 of contingency money. In this case, I just felt that I would allocate all the extras that were applied to the project in a separate ask. But I will not be using the 60,000.
So what happens to the 70,000?
It just doesn't get, it was, it's contingency only that City Council approved me to expend more than the original contract amount.
And now you're spending 226,000.
If I may, and correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing and what I'm reading in the memo is these expenses were outside of that contract that the council approved. The council approved a contract of $1,474, million, $1,474. What, what I'm hearing and reading is that, in addition to that contract, these additional expenses were outside of the contract. And I think that's what Mr. Cousins is trying to say.
Yes.
Is the contract came in on budget and did not require the use of the contingency funds for the project, but these additional expenses are outside of that contract. Am I correct?
They're part of the project, but outside of the original.
Contract.
Request for the approved amount of expenditure, yes.
So again, why aren't we back to the contingency fund?
I hear you, yeah.
Yeah, and I feel like, you know.
Yeah, but I could have subtracted the 70,000 from this 226 and just asked for the difference.
Right.
Yes, you're, you're right, I could have done that.
But if it wasn't a part of the original project, and this is now, I mean, it sounds like you have to do it, or do you not have to?
Two of the items, two of the items were completely unforeseen, and I had to spend the money because we had the road closed, we had the pavement stripped off of the bridge. And once they realized, and it's something that you do when you redo a bridge project, is you have to check the existing concrete structure. And because they tested it and found there was deficiencies in that concrete, hollow areas, we had to dig them up and repair them. There was no way we could have repaved the bridge and left those areas like that. The other item, the shimming, the paving, that was the paving of Church Street. We broke through to gravel after we milled the project. We had to patch it before we paved it. So there was an extra expense there that, and that had to be done. Unfortunately, quickly, the road was closed. It was the week before school was going to start. I couldn't inconvenience the public on the, on a delay.
So if I can just jump in, so this was back in August, you're saying?
Yes.
So I just think the process should have come to the council prior to this. So we were aware that this additional charge was going to come, come to us.
Yes.
That there were additional repairs that needed to be made. I mean, I guess that's where my, my concern is, is that we should have known about this beforehand. I understand the work had to get done. I think it's just the process and the timeframe in which council was notified.
Yes, and that's on me, you're absolutely right. Council.
So the work is done, and now you're wanting 226,000 to pay for that work that was completed in order for the project to be.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, maybe in future, I mean, you can't go backwards at this point with this project, but I feel like you're, this makes me uncomfortable, voting on something that was of this amount, which should have been in the original project specs or...
And even if it wasn't, because these were unforeseen repairs that needed to be done, it just should have been brought to council's attention back in August when.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In time, yeah.
And had, and had, had we only replaced the railings, that would have been covered under that contingency of that 70,000. And we wouldn't be here right now, really, talking about it, because the other two items wouldn't have, if the deck was fine and the milling had gone as planned, you know, I wouldn't be asking for that or that extra $160,000.
So where does this money come from? That's.
Bonded projects fund.
The bonding project.
And I know the question is, that I heard very clearly is, how much is in the bonded projects fund?
I don't have the exact numbers, I apologize.
Yeah, so we have not touched any of the 2025 bonded amounts.
Correct.
Which was $7 million.
Yes.
And we still have for 2026, we could go one more round, and I think that's another $5 million.
No, the 25 bond we appropriated, and that is the last one.
That's the last one. We have no, in 2026, the last round of bonding, we do.
There isn't.
No additional funding available for roads. We're going to be bonding for the high school project. Because I do know that in 2026, we have to go out one more time.
Okay, yeah, there's no more, there's no more bond.
Okay, so $7 million off the top of our head, but I would recommend that perhaps an accounting of where those bonded project funds are at the next council meeting, which is next Monday.
I'd be able to give you a report for that, yes.
I just don't, I'm still a little leery of this, and I don't really feel comfortable approving it or taking action on it.
It's not really a choice. You get into a project like this, there's unknowns, you open it up, you have to address it.
No, I get all of that. I mean, I understand, when you're pulling back the layers of the onion after all these decades or generations here, yeah, there's going to be overruns that are, or unforeseen things that happen, but.
To just jump in.
Just give us this, you know, two months after the project is kind of just, it's weak. It's, it's kind of inconsiderate to the council. I mean, I don't want to take action on this. I don't necessarily know that the numbers are right. I just don't have, I just don't have faith or confidence in it.
Would you feel more comfortable having that number of what we have left for bond funds before you approve this?
Yeah.
So can we, I mean.
I mean, I would table this, I would vote or move to table it.
All right, I hear a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
So I have one, two, three, four in favor, one opposed. We'll table it, but it's just a week. We're back here on Monday.
Yes.
A full accounting of what's left in the bonded projects. I do know it's.
I'm not saying, it's not, I'm not saying we can't, I just want to.
I agree.
Because if we're going to vote on it and take action, I want it to be correct.
Got it.
And I want to be able to understand it as well.
Correct. And I would like to have you consider using the contingency for the project.
Yes, absolutely. If you wouldn't mind, I think that would help alleviate some of the.
All right, so I will use the contingency for the railing replacement and then provide a new ask for the other two unforeseen items.
Thank you.
And bond.
And, thank you.
You know, I think that it would also be helpful, Paul, when you do that, you know, when you talk about the other projects, which were the bridge deck concrete patching after milling and inspection, that was paid to the contractor that did the work on the bridge and not a separate contractor?
It was paid to the contractor that did the, did the bridge, yes.
All right, and the asphalt shimming and approach roadway, also to the same contractor?
Correct.
Okay, good.
The paving company was a separate subcontract, but it was, this is all that one, one contract.
Then, under those circumstances, I think the council is correct. Show that use of that contingency, and then whatever that overage is, makes sense.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, a different question. You addressed quite a few issues with this bridge. What is the longevity of the bridge? Does it change after this type of work?
So most of the work for this bridge was underneath the bridge. It was steel repairs and bearing replacements. So now that that work is done and the concrete deck itself has been repaired, that bridge has, oh, I would have to say over 20, 30 years' life to it now. Steel, steel typically doesn't deteriorate. That's why when we did the Bog Road Bridge, the steel girders were already 50 years old, and I was assured that, you know, with maintenance, they'll last another 50. But the deck was shot, that's why we had to replace the deck. In this case, I think we're, like I said, I am not a bridge, a bridge engineer, but from what I've been told, we have, you know, 20, 30, maybe even longer years with these rehab.
Does this bridge now?
I am not sure. I could look it up and let you know.
Oh.
But again.
I'm curious if it's ancient, old, or just?
They're all around the same, the same age.
Genre, okay.
Yeah. But I will, I will have that for you next week as well.
55?
I was going to say.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Yeah.
It's on.
The last infrastructure bill.
Along as that Church Street.
But it turned out well, so thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I think anybody driving from the west end of Torrington appreciates that bridge.
Yes. It's key bridge.
Especially, yeah, more when you have to go around and you can't get.
Can't get there from here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move into item number nine. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize. Thank you.
Second.
Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Are there any questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize. Thank you, Council.
Second.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And are there any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to, yes, Chief Tripp. It's ready to spring.
Good evening again. Just giving an update on the East Side progress. All vehicles have been transferred and insured on the city side. The only thing we were waiting for was the building and the property. That's been offset with an MOU executed by the mayor in Torringford. So all the assets from Torringford, including the bank accounts, have been in the city's name. There's a separate account that's set aside for East Side protection. Anything based on that property, any rentals or any contracts that are associated with the property, go into this fund to help with East Side production. It could be the building repairs, it could be manpower, it could be equipment, whatever it is, property, maintenance, all those funds are going to go towards East Side. So we're making progress, so I hope to have a more, eat the report on staffing and occupancy and everything, hopefully for December. Once the new mayor gets in and we have a nice chat and I dig into the budget and look at the funds, I should have a plan ready to go. Secondly, I want to introduce my new deputy chief, finally. Yay, thank God, Benny Chasanik. Comes 27 years on the job with us. Got hired in '98. Great, he's a great, great guy, great choice, going to help me out. And I'm just so excited to, you know, start this new venue
new venue, and his new direction of the, of the fire department for next at least four years, so when I'm chief. Thirdly, inside your packet was an invitation to a pending ceremony this Wednesday night at the Torrington High School. We have a lot of promotions to do, we're kind of, we're stacking them up, because that is a lot of change in department from a deputy chief all the way down to some new firefighters. So it's going to be a great evening at, at the Torrington High School in the new auditorium. So I'm looking forward to that on Wednesday night. But you have your invitation in your packets, and we hope you can make it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Or the new deputy chief? Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. All right, moving on, anything else from engineering this evening, Paul? Thank you, from the city clerk's office.
Randall Stone is not going to determine the entire period of the contract date, it would be reported case of 2023, and would like to determine the due time for the date.
So that motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rouvet. Would you agree to amend your motion to reflect the expiry? Yeah, I don't pick, I didn't pick that up when I read it.
I didn't either.
So, December 14, 2030 is the expiration date. So, I heard Councilwoman Spino, she amended her motion. Have you amended your second, Councilwoman Rouvet?
Yes.
And will the council recast their vote in favor of the amended motions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Carol. I'm glad somebody was listening to us. So, anything else from the clerk's office? I know you've been very busy. Nothing else from the clerk's office? Okay, good, all right. Then let's move into item 12, I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're, I'll go to the Zoom, oh, did we lose Drake?
No, I'm here.
All right, anything to add this evening, Councilman Waldron?
Oh, here I am, no, nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Oliver?
Yeah, just something brief, I just wanted to congratulate both candidates on campaigns that were well-run, and they didn't hit below the belt, so it just, to me, is reflective of, you know, the camaraderie and the collaboration that, you know, our local politicians really do when they represent our community at large. And I wanted to thank the mayor and Steve and Drake for their service. And, Mayor, you're going to be missed tremendously, even though some of these things around the wall are a little rude that you're leaving, but okay, you know? You have well-represented the best interests of this city in so many different ways, on so many different boards, commissions, your influence really is historic here, and Molly's going to have, although your feet are small, big shoes to fill, and the community voted their conscience and their heart, and that's a good thing, kind of like when you have two teams that are battling it out, someone has to lose. So I'm proud of the way that the candidates and the individual parties carried themselves and handled themselves throughout this campaign, and I'm glad it's not a reflection of what's going on nationally or even on the state level. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their service, and you'll probably get roped back in somehow, some way, and we look forward to that, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rouvet?
Well, I'll dittle that, but she has one more meeting left.
Oh, that's right, yes.
But all of it.
I'm ahead of it, sorry.
Yes, you articulated well, and I'll save my, my future comments for the next meeting, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Spino, anything?
Just thank you to Steve, it's been a pleasure serving with you, I know we have one more meeting, but just like David said, we ran really good cleaning campaigns, we appreciate that. It was fun.
Yeah, thank you.
It was fun.
We're fun times.
Didn't feel like.
I lost a lot of sleep, but it was fun.
I think you fell asleep then. Wait.
I'll tell campaign stories after the meeting.
Yeah.
But it, it was a good campaign, we raised some good issues, and hopefully it'll help us advance. So congratulations again, Molly, you have my assistance if you need a phone call away. So, thank you, so I hope I could continue my service, and thank you, Mayor, and all the candidates who want, so we, we have a few new faces that, that you'll see, so, welcome aboard.
So, I know usually I, I rarely add anything to this, but I am going to add something this evening, just as a, as a comment for the public that is tuning in, I know from personal experience how exhausted you are after a campaign, especially the day after the campaign. And I know that Councilwoman Spino was immediately called into a local station, she was being interviewed, but Councilwoman Iveyne showed up at a board of trustees meeting, ready to listen to that mind-numbing presentation, and I could say that now that I'm exiting? Mind-numbing presentation that our fiduciary advisors provides to the board of trustees semi-annually, prepared to make decisions on the pension accounts and on pension calculations. And I was just really, truly incredibly impressed that despite the turnout of that election, you were here, and I can tell you, I think that speaks volumes to your character.
Thank you.
So, so I want to say thank you on that. I know we have another meeting, I forbid I don't get sick and miss it.
That's my concern.
But, so I'm going to stop there and hold all other comment, we do have two more agenda items, and I think we have some delegates representing us this evening at Bad Dog Brewery, so doing professional representation at the Bad Dog Brewery. So let me move this into the public comment portion, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public, thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, nobody from the public other than department heads. So then I'm going to move right into item 14, no further action items before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
No, I'm going to, still have stuff to do at home.